Hey Guards! Um, so I'm back to finishing my assignment today and today is gonna be a great day. Um, yeah. Uh, here's one of my friends, he's on World of Warcraft right now, so give him a watch if you enjoy World of Warcraft, cuz he's really cool. Um, oops, uh, I'm gonna close that up for now. So unfortunately, yesterday what happened was, um, for the FPS, I managed to... I ended up closing all the tabs that I had open and I wanted to get started running, but uh, it didn't happen. So, I'm gonna have to go through the research again and re- uh, well not redo it, but just find the right papers from yesterday. Uh, it's a good thing though that I kinda remember what I was doing yesterday and what was that? Um, goniometric measurements, uh, entail that the tester measures the range of motion for each joint of the human body, measuring goniometrics. It's kinda strange that it was not one word here. So I'm gonna just add that to the dictionary. Um, so measuring goniometrics is a method of quantifying range of motion relative to the participant's movement. These measurements can include the range of motion around the axle of an ankle or elbow joint at each degree of flexion. Studies such as... And I think it was Habad Al or Hadad Al. So I'm hoping, um, just a little bit. Uh, the spacebar on my keyboard is a little bit strange, so I gotta boom sometimes. Um, and I think it was a study that was done in 2012 about the reliability of the goniometric assessment. It was, uh, no, not the inner observer reali- um, reliability. Reliability of the three measures of ankle dorsiflexion and range of motion. So today, um, still in the middle of the day, uh, it's a beautiful day outside, I kinda wanna go out and go get some rides going on my bicycle or whatever, but I'm inside right now, so I'm a little bit ahead of myself, I just wanna like write this as quickly as possible and then get going, uh, back outside. At least for now. Also, I wanna get back on that Halo 3, that was pretty cool. And, um, I actually just started, uh... Where was it? Ah, I'll get into that after, cuz I'm gonna get distracted yet again. Anyway, while I'm kinda somewhat distracted, new wallpaper! So, this is actually pretty sweet. Um, I drew this the other day, just throwing that in there. So I was like all happy about this and still pretty happy about it, but then I saw this and I was like, whoa, this is awesome! So, yeah, a little, um, pretty cool. Uh, okay, yeah, and my sound is actually working this time, which is good. Um, things are going down and way less lag, so even better. How's the lighting? Seems a bit dark, I'm gonna turn on my li- uh, I'm gonna turn on the light in the room, um, although it is the middle of the day. How's that? A little bit better? Right now, the reliability of the goniometric measurements are at top priority. And what they do... Well, how reliable is the measurement? That should be good. So... Whoa, 3D goniometer? That's pretty cool. So it seems that, um, if this is the 3D goniometer, it seems that it's been, it gets done via x-ray. Um, which is, which is kinda similar and different to the 3D modeling that we're doing today. However, the x-ray actually views the bones through the body and it does it through a different method. Um, the way that we do 3D is we kinda place markers. So it's kinda interesting. Is that the 3D goniometer? I thought it was like... Side note, right? Um, but anyway. It is! So this is, this is pretty cool, um... I think it was a chart that I had there, so the testing chart, I was able to pull that up. Even better. Ah, anyway. Um, so this is pretty cool. Um, better visibility, tibial plates, malleolae, lissagile, radiograph, um, tilt, hip function, etc. Tibialis, uh, plates. So yeah, um, this is, this is the difference that I was, um, talking about between the x-ray, so this is done via radiograph, um, where compared to the 3D modeling, which is done via... They do it in several different ways now, so they do camera tracking and GPS measurements. I mean GPS tracking, but this is pretty cool. Um, also to see how it works with via our radiograph. So I'm, I'm assuming and like, I, I'm hypothesizing actually, um, because I know I could be wrong. Um, I'm definitely probably wrong, but maybe right, I don't know. Um, maybe they take a radiograph picture of this in its its neutral state and then at full flexion or full extension and then take the second radiograph and then compare both. And then keep these guys along a scale. Which would provide a pretty accurate measurement because you're getting it right down to the bone. Um, compared to placing a marker, but placing a marker still be kinda cool. However, I kinda think maybe combining a radiograph with 3D imaging might not be the best. But it'd be kinda interesting how to apply a radiograph. And then this is how I get distracted, because now I'm thinking, what about radiographs? Ah, forget it, forget it. Uh, so I'm gonna put that away for now. Oh, posture is, uh, so it's kind of a good thing too, cuz I tend to do this quite a bit. And, uh, I think right now it's a good time to kinda lean back, uh, maybe grab a pillow, put it in the center of my back, it's really hot today. As well. It's kinda nice. It's better than yesterday, yeah, today's like hot, just plain hot, yesterday was like hot and cold and humid, so pretty cool. Here I am getting distracted again. Enter tester reliability goniometric measurements of the knee and validity clinical measurements comparing them to measurements. Taken from Rowent to Geno. Rowent Geno- Rowent Genograms? 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 Rowent Genograms. I'm not sure what that is, but that sounds pretty interesting. Oh, an x-ray image. Internal structures passing x-rays. No! Um, ugh. Uh, internal structures passing x-ray images, photographs of internals, uh, da-da-da. So radiograph. Radiography. Hmm. Gamma rays. So yeah, this is, this is what I was actually thinking about, um, radiography over the years and how it's come to, um, deal with the radiation and have we... Yeah, that's a, that's a whole different aspect of studying. Anyway, this is, this is super interesting because goniometric measurements in the knee, we go back over here, musculoskeletal injuries, etc., etc. We know that there's a great number of musculoskeletal, musculoskeletal injuries in terms of overuse, um, specifically towards the knee, tightness of the hip, um, some people, they get tendonitis, bursitis, etc. There's quite a high percentage, um, don't really wanna read over that. Oh, here we go. Lower back, 130, knees 107, and shoulders, so uh, we have the, the second highest instance of, uh, injuries in terms of weightlifting um, determined by Calhoun, Al, uh, 1999. So the second highest and that's what kinda makes it more relevant and descriptive towards what I'm doing right now, so just for, um, relevancy sake, I'm gonna put this in. Um, unlike the last paper, so I went over here, uh, we found, uh... Yeah, so we found the R values, uh, um, the inner correlation va- We, we found the values, uh, the confidence interval, um, and the P value and the R value and how did I already forget this? Um, and the mean, or the median, sorry. Um, so yeah, uh, I'm not, I'm not the greatest with terminology, but yeah. I'm gonna go back down here, uh, remember remember the idea around these, these numbers and the idea around what these, each of these mean. Uh, the confidence interval of 95% is the predictive value, the R, um, the R and the P value, the relative values between two tables and/or itself. Um, so studies such as... We're gonna go back here, um, without having to read as much into it. 30 healthy subjects, let's see what we can at least get out of the abstract. Cuz we already have the R value and ICC value and the validity over here. Um, let me just see, out of this abstract, if I'm able to extract enough information to put it in my paper. However, if I'm not, I'm gonna put that towards the back and then continue on. And, um, you know, a, a big problem that I have when when, when, when I, um, do these type of, do these types of essays is I'm not able to get the entire full text. You do have to request a full text and thank your Research Gate, because they've made quite a bit of research available. Um, if you're able to find the information that you want and able to, um, critically analyze that through the abstract, there's nothing wrong with that. If you, if, if, if you're looking for a specific piece of information, the thing that we're trying to avoid here is biases. So the biasy, um, thanks to, thanks to my teacher, uh, my professor, um, I'll probably send you a message at some point, uh... Cuz, uh, I learned quite a bit about, um, critical analyses from being in school and like very thankful, because it's like a fountain of knowledge, so it's great. Oh, yeah, so now I may go quiet for, um, the next half an hour or so, if anybody wants to pop in, say hi, anything, um, hey, Lurks, what's... Lurks is not here? Uh, Lurks will be around, but anyway, if anyone who wants to pop in at any point in time, uh, send me a message. Um, yeah, I'll just keep it going. Yeah, so that's it pretty much. It's a knee joint ankle, um, the inner tester reliability is high, has a good R value, it has a good predictive value, um... Your, yeah, it has another, same thing and the validity is high, so what is a reliability? The reliability is the ability to repeat this test and then continually get the similar results or continually test... Yeah, continually test, um, the inner tester, so the tester within the same, um, session. Uh, the ICC is the predictive value, so these combined definitely mean that this is a reliable test. The validity is how able is this test to quantify what it's supposed to quantify. Um, the R values, so the correlated values are pretty good on this and we're able at this percentile to, it doesn't say the ICC of what, the intercast correlation coefficient, yeah, that was it. So, sometime, it, it, it's very strange, um, for me, because I, I forget as quickly as I learn sometimes. So, uh, especially when it comes to terminology, I'm more of a theoretical person. Uh, it, it's very interesting in that sense, um, and this is more something that is harder to look at and then remember what you're doing if you're not using, you know, on a constant basis, you know, um... We have quite a, quite a few, um, new software alternatives that are available out there, um, pretty cool stuff. But I don't use it on a daily basis, because, um, I'm more practical. However, this is really good stuff to be able to analyze in the future, so what I'm gonna have to do and um, a problem that I have personally and a problem that I need to continually fix as I study and as I continually practice is make sure that I know these things. If I'm, if I'm gonna wanna actually, or, or if anybody is gonna want to actually produce a paper like this and get something like this published, we have to know these things, so, you know, even slip-ups like that can really mess me up in the future, however, it's a good thing, like, I'm sitting at home right now and I'm just studying and I can continually learn how to do it as I'm doing it. I may have like even explained this something wrong as I explained it, so don't take my word for word on, um, on, uh, correlation coefficients or cor- Just, um, yeah. Oh! Oh, already got that in there. Ah, okay, there we go. Whoa! So it's good to have, um, a little bit of practice for writing. Twenty and sixty years. So, what's the middle between twenty and sixty? Um... So we have forty... Forty, okay. So N equals thirty, ages forty plus slash minus, give or take, um, twenty years. So, from this part to this part over here, and I know there's definitely a couple of students out there um, that perform similar studies, uh, it's very easy to get, um, stuck into what would be considered plagiarism in a sense like this, even a sentence like this can get you in trouble. So, at first, it may be nice to kinda like look over it, maybe rewrite it here, but then once you and it may not even make sense at first, as you read it in your head. It makes sense when they write it, they've done a good paper on this. But you writing it out yourself, it's gonna make more sense, so write it out here, then afterwards, take it, edit it, and make sure that it's not in there after. Um, do what you can to avoid that. But, um, if you have to get the information here to here, then do what you can and then edit it after. With healthy subjects. Position on their right side. Left position. And, ah... Right side. Lying on a Rowent to Genographic table. And placing their lower left extremity on a stabilizing board. And, so, I don't know why I put that comma there. Placing their lower left extremity on a stabilizing board, comma, get rid of that, elevated fifteen centimeters above the table surface. Works. So basically what I'm doing is I'm re-describing the study here and then going over why it was reliable and valid. To standardize the testing position, uh, the assistant and intertester was... To standardize the testing position of each participant, the intertester placed this sphere. So basically what I'm saying here is that they lie down like that. And then they move their leg in and out, um, using the, using the external assistance of, um, one of the intertesters. But, um, to say so in scientific terms is kinda interesting and then to say oh, at least, at least that's what I, that's what I'm getting out of this right now. Um, I, I, I kinda think maybe they were thinking along the lines of, um, using both knee joints, um, to kinda standardize the position of it and then try to determine what the maximal point of flexion is and, I mean, sorry, flexion and then extension, but it depends on what you're talk- what muscle you're talking about. Uh, through a stabilizing board, the assistant then moved the left leg to a tree, yeah, so then, um... So I'm gonna have to, this, to standardize the testing position of each participant, the inner tester placed the posterior aspect of the subject's left thigh in contact- place the posterior aspect of the subject's left thigh in contact with two fifteen centimeter pegs which were inserted perpulent per- perpendicularly onto a stabilizing board. So should be something like that um. The assistant then moved the left leg to achieve an arbitrary ag. Then the left leg of the participant um yeah it was me to to measure the angle of the knee joint in in the position uh in the intended position. Once the position um the participant or or the intertester. I don't even know why I'm saying intertester right now I just say the tester. The test cause that uh it just doesn't fit there I mean they have intra and intertesters so the intertesters are the people who are in the facility testing at the same time as the same person who um developed the test itself. Um the intra tester is somebody else who gets the paper afterwards so if I were to look at this right now and I was an intra tester I would be an intra tester. Um the people that are participating in the study and there right now those are the intertesters of so yeah. The tester then yeah once the participant leg or um how am I even gonna say that? The assistant then moved the leg the left leg to achieve an arbitrary angle of the knee joint and held the limb in that in that position to physical uh so it really helps because sometimes my eyes get all googly um to highlight this stuff and remember what sentence I'm on. Uh I can't remember who gave me that advice but um thank you for that I'm like very appreciative. Once the using the participant goes through going to the intended angle or the um either required angle then each of the testers to please describe therapist or um to standardize the testing of each participant, the tester placed the posterior aspect of the subjects at time in contact with two fifty centimeter pegs which were inserted perpendicular onto a stabilizing board, then the left leg of the participant was moved to measure the angle of the knee joint in the intended position. Once the left leg of the participant was placed into a required angle uh into the required angle each of the testers um the next group of each of the the next group of testers yeah. Oop, I wrote that twice. Were then instructed to um measure the angle using a plastic goniometer at the knee joint of the sagittal plane from the greater trochanter to the lateral condyle and the femur and the the head of the fibula fibula and the 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 lateral malleolus. So um sagittal plane right click I don't know how I didn't spell that right two Ts instead of two Ls little stuff like that trips me out. Um from knee joint of the sagittal plane utilizing landmarks such as uh to measure the angle. So um the next group of testers were then instructed to measure the angle using a plastic goniom goniometer at the knee joint of the at the knee joint of the sagittal plane. Utilizing uh mus uh skeletal landmarks such as the greater trochanter to the and then I'm not entirely sure and then the fibula to the lateral malleolus. So let me trochanter to the femur that should be or wouldn't it be the the head of the fibula? Let me just uh review some of this stuff really quickly. Trochanter. Yeah, so from the hip to the knee. The lateral condyle of the femur. I don't know why I said that uh femus. Femus. Yep, so um the top of the hip, greater trochanter uh just on the side there to the lateral condyle. Um so let's just change that up utilizing skeletal landmarks such as the greater trochanter to the lateral condyle of the femur and the head of the fibula to the lateral malleolus. So this should be the head of the fibula which is just the top of over there lateral malleolus the foot um let me just take a peek at that and yeah uh so medial condyle, lateral condyle of the fem what you talking about? Lateral malleolus um and then the head of the fibula so this is this would be the fibula right at the top here. Yeah, so just to the top of the foot. And then just down there. Awesome. So um this is this is actually a spot right here where uh pinchments at the ankle often occur as well um what we can get into that later uh if if anybody's interesting interested in that lurks. Maybe. Aha, that's my dude. And then um a rowing to uh rowing genogram was taken of the extremity before the subject was moved. Pierce and da 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 blah blah so now we got um now we know what's up. Uh we got the bony landmarks, we know how this stuff was done um. This is the testing procedure and now we may not have the exact table but we we did a we did basically what was a critical analysis of an abstract. Uh I might end up requesting the full text after a while after one day when I finally join or when I finally get a membership. Or I mean the yeah when I finally create an account. So um seems that I'm I'm the lurks of research gate. Lurks? You're not alone. Um so the data analysis revealed that um it was found that the data analysis um I'll just say this uh inter or um during Bogia et al. nineteen eighty seven study it was found that the intertester reliability was R equals point nine eight. And I think I just discovered a new thing of formatting so I might have to go back over this um. ICC equals point nine nine and validity. R equals point nine seven to oh sorry two point nine eight. ICC equals point nine eight two point nine nine. High values relating to of the knee displayed high values relating to intertester reliability and validity. Boom. I'd love to put that part in um. I could add a little bit more but see what I got. It's a it's it's actually a pretty short assignment um which is great um. Wrote quite a bit on just the ideas. But I'm I'm happy with this so far I'm still a little bit under uh the count of the words that I'd like. But I'm going to put this away for now. Um yeah I'm I really don't want to get into that even more uh. I'm just gonna put in a couple of my own uh a couple of my own words here so goniometric inter intertester measures the range of motion da da da. Um timeline feasibility, rate of perceived exertion, methodology, practice competitions, warm-up rationale, strength rationale, power, summary limitations. Um R P E? Full R P E questionnaire so I'm gonna copy that. Go down here paste that. Dude ah man. And just put that there. And I'm gonna highlight this. And then open that up there and then um so the reason I did that uh because I put an automatic table at the top here and um okay I I didn't wanna mess up the formatting on this table but it looks like I'm gonna have to oh update table. We got goniometric measurements back on. Um yeah it is like super hot in here too so I may um find another shirt to put on and uh how's the camera angle? Okay, I guess it's good. Each um or each uh participant will be measured with charts as found on okay now this is gonna be the fun part um this is gonna be the really fun part uh you know what though there might be a shortcut to this. Sorry about that there guys uh my my table just got really dusty um. But yeah um another other uh notes. But there's a bunch of blank paper here uh. I'll have to put that over there. Uh I got my textbook so I well I have a textbook. Um a ve- a very essential textbook. That should have the charts on it and if it does that is awesome. So um I was mentioning this last session that um I think my voice may be a little bit loud i- if it is I'm gonna I'm gonna um turn it down after but ooh supplemental we- web resource. Anyway uh back to back to what I was doing here. Um oftentimes it it's easy to get the googly eyes when um searching through tons and tons of papers on Google and stuff and you know when it comes to these sheets or your rate of perceived exertion your um goniometric measurements um let's see what else we got here. Push band that's already been done uh let's just go into what that is real quick. Push pro system they take the band they measure the velocity and the movement. Um at the time when I originally thought of this idea, this was amazing. Um right now um they definitely made some good improvements I haven't been able to keep up with it because this is kind of this is pretty serious stuff uh but really cool stuff I got a chance to put it into my assignment uh so definitely cool stuff. Um anyways the rate of perceived exertion and the goniometric measurements. I wonder if you can actually do goniometric measurements with the pushband. Maybe it might come out soon that'd be kinda cool um so taking measurements like that with a pushband uh the pushband works very similar to similarly to our phones uh except that it's a little bit more sensitive. Um similarly to our phones that are uses G P S technology. So it's a triangulation tech type technology it has an X, Y, and Z axes. Um I probably got those axes wrong but it's able to position the the thing itself across so going back to what we were talking about earlier um that's why radiographic goniometric measurements was uh kind of like interesting to me. However, it does have that um ooh goniometrica. What's that? right right so right now that's gonna distract me a little bit um I get I get often distracted so anyway back to the textbook back to being focused right now um it's really good to find the the handouts the sheets and stuff the the standard stuff in the textbook and then this is scientific research this is stuff you can reference so uh never be scared to use your textbooks go back and especially stuff that were meant to purchase and even the stuff that like I have stuff from years ago when I first started university uh and college and whatnot that I still have saved up in my little bookcase shelf and all over everywhere so um it's always good to refer to this stuff so then you go through um you take a peek at these books and uh it's always good to go back cause when you first buy a textbook you don't like uh something that I realized uh when I was in school I didn't really appreciate the textbook as much because I always had the professor there and I always had like you know homework to do and all that when you leave school a couple of years after you look at your textbooks you're like wow there's some really good stuff in here and like I like I have some really good books and maybe you can go over it after a while but uh here we go um however in this book this book does have quite a bit of information it does not have the handout I think I got um the wrong uh maybe I picked up the wrong textbook for this topic specifically however this literally covers almost everything that I would have wanted to put in here anyway um unfortunately I can't really just reference one textbook for an entire assignment or I could have or maybe I don't know however it does have some good points that I'd like to keep for later sorry about that my throat's getting a little bit dry in here but um couple things I'd like to review on that I just found in here uh which relate to this and I should have read this but um yeah it's it's due it's due pretty soon so uh unfortunately I'm gonna have to I'm talking about the the law of mass and acceleration and force and I'm looking at over uh 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 on my notes over here positive work and power negative work and power angular work and power so um rotational force torque etcetera that's some stuff that you know it really interests me when it comes to strength conditioning so good book kinda glad I I picked that up some really good books here and hopefully once I'm done this assignment and my next assignment I'm gonna have some time to really read my books so it's gonna be good so um what was I doing here this is pretty much it each participant will be measured on uh using the chart as found on there's another vali- validity and reliability I could just use that from another textbook might end up getting that where most of my uh oh yeah just on the fact that this is literally measurement of joint so after writing that en- that article I just found this book measurement of joint motion a guide to goniometry um I think this is worth a reference for for goniometrics um oh buddy I salute you I'm that I'm gonna um this is worth a buy too uh possibly no yeah so it's gonna be a while um I might not be leaving my room for quite some time I got uh I have quite a bit to 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 um to read about I have quite a bit to learn I have quite a bit to write about and I think I'm about three or four textbooks behind so measurement chart go there Narkin thank you very much where did I put that each participant will be measured using the standard format found in Narkin at Als twenty sixteen textbook so now I'm gonna go over here uh measurement of joint range of motion active range of motion and so on uh I'm just literally gonna go back up here and I already know that testing the spine temporal temporal mandibular joint um this is a little bit over my head so I'm not gonna get into you know right I'm gonna use these standards that they have here so looking at this we're not gonna go all the way so these are extremity joints um this is just an example of what you would find in the book um without trying to analyze it on your own um let's see uh this may be interesting to measure so the radiocarpal midcarpal joints um we definitely don't want our um we don't want our wrist to get too deviated uh that's just a little bit of ah my wrist it's been deviated my ulna um so it's a little weird joke that I have but um yeah I just wanna have specific measurements I'm gonna refer to this as the standards of which I'm gonna be measuring this and it's a bit of assumptuous but this is the textbook it seems on measurement of joint motion a guide to goniometry uh goniometry and it's also uh citable and a scientific source so I'm just gonna go down this and I'm pretty sure this is exactly what I need and then make sure that it's what I want um so what am I gonna measure in terms of the hand the hip and the the knee and such um not really gonna go out of my way to measure certain joints and I'm not gonna go out of my way to measure this in as great detail just because of the con- I I want the program to be convenient for my athletes um but I'm gonna refer to this for the standards of which I'm gonna test because this is based on other scientific research so this is should be the most standardized and reliable slash valid method of testing so I'm just gonna read this over and make sure that I'm not talking you know another reason that I really like textbooks because it's always something I refer to so it is basically the same thing as the last study that we were just reading and the person would be on their side just like that left leg on the table uh I think they put two markers over here and the person would move up the leg put two markers over here and then basically that and then remeasure measure using radiograph radiography or gonio- gonio- goniometry sorry but I believe they were placed on the table because it was radio radiography you know the X-ray type thing so this is the exact chapter procedures and the page yeah so this is um yeah this is some good stuff really good stuff I should get that book Kindle no ten bucks Kindle no how come the Spanish word in the ten they standardize the so I'm thinking about that metal gonomer I don't remember what it was called but I'm gonna have to find this as that seems to be the gonomer think it's a baseline yeah it is the baseline so I'm pretty sure this is the same um gonomer that we used in school unless it was the M I E mm-hmm simple full circle um gonomer so it really doesn't matter uh I'd like to refer to standardize instead of um M I E clinical gonomer or something similar I know the baseline is also um a pretty um the baseline it seems to be a normal gonomer but they can be off at times especially if you get a no name gonomer not sure so I'm gonna say M I E or a baseline gonomer Baseline gonyometer. Depending on availability. Uh duh duh duh, and that's that. So I'm going to. Pretty much done now, I'm gonna go. Tand my stuff in, I kinda wanted to put in a couple of charts and stuff, but. And for these kind of documents, what usually happens is I'll throw in a chart and. Everything will be all over place, I'd like to get a little bit creative. So tune in maybe later, um I'll get to drawing some stuff. I'll get to um maybe getting a little bit better at Krita. Got a whole new environment of art to do and maybe. We'll get on some music later, uh take some notes and work together. I'm actually uh. Pretty happy that all of this got done um. Oh oui, this is good. It seems that they also have a um. Digital um gonyometer, which is pretty cool, um I actually do have some really inter- interesting instruments myself. Um for measuring uh athletes and measuring just regular participants, so. Hopefully I do a couple videos of that in the future. Uh yet again, thank you for tuning in, um we're kinda leaving it on a bit of a strange note, but. Hey, I just got over like a massive doozy right now, I just have to do the formatting and call it a day and. It's done. Uh yeah, so have a great day, guys, I'll be on later, um I'll probably be gaming. Uh if anybody's noticed uh since the last couple of videos, um also my um. My throat's getting a little bit sore from talking so much, but if anybody's noticed. The lag has gone way down, so we're gonna get into some really cool video games in the future, guys. It's starting to sound like a show now, but I guess I'm just getting comfortable. And and be being on Twitch and 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 streaming, so um. Hey guys. Bye. No, I have to press the.